And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to invite up our elementary school principals. At the June 25th, 2019, school committee meeting, I shared the school improvement plans with the school committee. So I'm gonna invite up Ms. Klype Pantazopoulos, Mr. Ron Sandborn, and Dr. Robert Skaza. They're each gonna give a brief overview of their respective school. And also, just to welcome Amy Mulcurne. She's gonna be the principal of our new school, so she'll be here to listen and provide support. So, thank you. So first, if I could ask Mr. Sandborn to come up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity. As Superintendent Bergeron said, the school improvement plans of the elementary schools have been presented to you, so I will not be reading them to you or going over them as you've seen them, but to really highlight some of the areas for which that are the areas of focus this year at Jarick School. So, we take pride in the work that we do as a data system, as a data school, and we find that although we enjoy what we are doing, that sometimes the data wasn't showing us what we were hoping to see. So through the opportunity, over the course of last year, building administration, as well as our team leadership group, had the opportunity to work with Dr. Paul Ash and really dive into a theory of action that would support some of the areas of growth that we see could impact the students at Jarick. So the theory of action that we had come up with is refining a protocol for students who transition between EL levels from special education, from intervention groups, or into our school to better determine instructional supports. Then students will receive more timely interventions to accelerate achievement of grade level standards. So although that is one main goal, what we are hoping to do is to really delineate the supports that we are going to put in place in certain areas. Specifically with our new students who arrived to us at Jarick School, what we would like to do is, as they come in, put their name on a list to create a plan and to meet on each incoming student within the first three weeks of them being there at Jarick School, to ensure that we are meeting their needs, rather than waiting for information to come into us from the previous school district, to make sure that we are addressing all the students that are before us. And then be sure that if there is any further action that needs to take place, that we then schedule another meeting for those students to support their needs as well. We have found that in our large EL population, that we can do a better job with students who are EL ones and twos that transition to an EL three. Because the development within that particular level is so vast that we want to ensure that we are meeting the needs of those students, so we've included some meetings with all of the stakeholders, those who are the current teachers to that particular student, outside of the general classroom teacher, as well as those who will be transitioning and working with the student moving forward, going from a two-and-a-half-hour pull-out instructional model as an EL student to now that they are receiving 60 minutes of instruction as an EL three, what other supports can we put in place to make sure that those students are successful? We have also found with students who are found ineligible in the area of special education, to be sure that we are putting systems in place for those students, that once they no longer receive that specialized instruction, what is going to happen next for those individual students, so that they remain moving in the continuum that they should, as well as being successful, working with other resources that are available within the schools, as well as with the assistance of our interventionists in the area of math and reading, making sure that they have time in their schedule specifically devoted to the transitioning of those students from that instructional round cycle to moving forward to whomever will be working with those individuals, to ensure that all parties and stakeholders know the successes of that student, so that they will continue moving forward. And throughout what I have just described to you, one of the things that we will continue to be working on throughout this year is the development of a universal student success plan. We dabbled a little bit into this, less formal than described just now, with grade four, focused on the students who were identified as our most struggling learners, moving from grade three to grade four, as deemed on our MCAS data. And so, we also need to create student success plans for our EL students who have not made the growth for which the state has deemed that they should. So we're going to be working on creating a universal document, so that no matter what level of intervention or instruction they're receiving, be it from special education or within EL, or amongst a series of stakeholders, that there is a trajectory of the supports that have been in place, the level of success for each student, and the plans moving forward. So we're really excited in diving into that information and the work that we have established at the end of last year, and look forward to greater results. Questions?
Questions for the committee? Any questions for the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite up Ms. Klype Pantazopoulos, the principal of the Kane School.
Good evening, everyone. A little bit of information about Kane's goals this year. We have three goals that we're focusing on this year. And the first two goals are on improving our ELA and MCAS math achievement. And we compiled this together during our work with Paul Ash as well, last year with our lead teachers and the school administration. A couple of initiatives that I want to highlight on the first two goals that we have are, we're going to be working on restructuring our, well, we have been working on restructuring our building schedule to provide appropriate instructional time. When we've put that into effect starting this year, and it allows for more blocks of time for ELA for math, and we've increased our science time this year as well. We're also implementing a flexible grouping model of RTI instruction in grades kindergarten and first this year, based on the Carrie Thurston work that we have done, and we had presented it last year, last school year. And we're also looking at increasing our PLC time for staff to meet, and we're trying to have them align their meeting times so that they can meet horizontally, as well as vertically within our school day, just to look at how the grade levels advance going forward in the, from year to year with the different subject areas. Our third goal that we're working on this year is increasing our student-teacher relationships and increasing our student supports. And a couple of initiatives from that is that we're highlighting students who are going to, we've started by highlighting students who go above and beyond during the school day. So we're working on promoting all those positive relationships between students and students, as well as students and staff. We're working on getting a student council started, so that the students are able to have a voice in our school, and we're hoping that maybe we can expand that going forward next year into a K through five student council. And our schedule this year has allowed us to have an SEL block, a social-emotional learning block, built into it. And it's for all grades, and all teachers have been provided with resources to teach students how to handle certain situations, such as conflicting, conflicts, teasing, bullying, and what to do and how to handle those situations that they might come across. And we've also, part of the, building the student supports is also our PBIS and it work that we have been doing, and we're continuing this year as well. And, for example, this week, we've started on promoting our expected hallway behaviors and ensuring that the students are following them. Next week, we'll have another focus within building-wide, to kind of help them all work together in creating a positive school culture and student supports. Those are just a few highlights. I can go into a lot more details if you want, but, any questions?
Questions for the committee? Any questions for the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite up Dr. Robert Skaza, principal of the Richer School.
Hello, everyone. Two goals for Richer School. The first is to improve attendance. And we have made some strides with that already. Proud of the work we did last year. Did steal an idea from Principal Sandborn when we started using whip-around meetings, where we met on all students who had reached a certain amount of absences, with a team identified why these absences could be occurring, and then set a plan in place to contact parents or take steps necessary to decrease the amount of absences moving forward. And we saw some results from that. We got zero out of four last year with chronic absenteeism, and this year, we had three out of four points with chronic absenteeism. So, we're happy about that. We want to keep that moving forward. So we're gonna do some relatively unique and relatively simple things here. The first thing we're gonna do is send a global message out to our parents, starting from kindergarten screening time. Every kindergarten family gets screening results sent home. With those screening results, we are gonna send home research and information about why school attendance is so important, so we're gonna attack kindergarten right from the get-go. A global message will also go out to all families, informing them of the importance of school, being in school, and regular attendance. So we're gonna try to educate parents who might require a little education on why it is so important that their son or daughter is at school every day. We're gonna set daily attendance targets for the classroom grade level in school and identify patterns based on those targets. We're gonna try to not make it a competition so much as an opportunity to just highlight good attendance, bring attention to it, and then from what surfaces, see if we can find any patterns. Grade level, age of kid, anything to do with the demographics of the parents, things like that. We're also looking to, or I'm specifically looking to have every teacher at Richer School make at least one phone call home to each family in their classroom to have a positive conversation about what's going on at school with their son or daughter. So I want them to call and talk about school attendance, talk about what's going on in school, talk about why it's so important, initiate that conversation, and then put it back on the parents. I reached out to you, now I want to reach, you to reach back to me, to tell me what's going on at home. You know, what's going on in the life of your son or daughter outside of school. And I think I might be able to better facilitate that with some discussion prompts, if you will. We do the little protege program at Richer School, where the teachers get weekly discussion prompts. We want to give the teachers discussion prompts for that positive phone call home. So you're calling home, and you're gonna want to talk about X, Y, or Z that's going on at school, just to have a little frame for the conversation. We kicked around the idea of whether or not a bus could be sent out, a late bus, to run a route to pick up kids that struggle with transportation, or families that struggle with transportation, rather, and might, because they missed the bus, or because there was an appointment in the morning, or whatever the circumstance might be, have the opportunity to have a bus come around a little later that morning to pick them up and make sure they get to school. And finally, we we were planning on, this might be a little radical, but I was considering having parent-teacher conferences be mandatory and sending that message to the parents. A lot of times, parents don't think they have to come to the conference for whatever reason, and I want to change that notion. And if it's a phone conference, if it is a FaceTime conference, or, we can get around certain barriers, but I want to make sure that we at least consider conferencing with all parents regardless of the specific circumstances with their child. The second goal is around the priority groupings, based on Carrie Thurston's model. We're just trying to get that up and running in grade one. Kindergarten has done a nice job piloting it last year. They're ready to go. We're waiting for them to set their groups up based on the screening data. In kindergarten, and grade one has the spring assessment data from the universal screener that they can use to get their groups up and running relatively soon. We're starting the schedule and reinforcing the practice starting this week, where we have support staff from kindergarten heading to first grade to help with the priority grouping, so that the times that they occur flip-flop, to maximize the amount of staff available. And I just want to get that structure in place, so we don't have to rebuild afterward and kind of backpedal. So, we're not quite ready to group the students just yet, or intentionalize the instruction, but we will be there soon, and we'll have the structure in place for when that time comes.
Questions for the committee?
Actually, more of a comment. I actually wanted to say, I wanted to compliment you on your focus and the priorities, because you really had, overall, you and the staff had really done a great job of making strides of improvements, and a lot of your data points over ELA and math, and that was great to see. But taking something and really focusing in on the absenteeism issue and the attendance is huge, and especially starting that conversation early, so that you can have effect down the road as well. And I really wanted to compliment you all on focusing in on that, and I actually like to hear that you're trying to find a different way of reaching the path with the parents on how to handle that conferencing situation. Because I have to say, I, as a parent, when I would go into the school and I would see sometimes families that might be there, but having language barriers, and trying to find someone who can have those discussions, and I think if you can do it and be creative, whether it's a FaceTime or phone call, that'll present you with other opportunities to connect. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to give us an update on your school? How's it looking?
It looks great.
No issues in there yet? Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to welcome Julia. Julia Marshall's our new recording secretary, so welcome. Thank you very much for coming and taking care of this for us. We certainly appreciate it. First topic I'd like to talk about is just Labor Day Parade. Just want to say thank you to all the Panthers who were involved in Labor Day Parade. I was pleased to see such a strong showing of pride, and you couldn't go more than 50 feet in the entire parade without an MPS student, a performance group, an organization, or the strong showing from the local youth sports, wearing the Panther gear. As always, it was a pleasure to watch. Thanks to everyone who put on such a great event. The second topic is about city elections. I received notice from Stephen Kerrigan, city clerk, that there will be primary elections in Marlboro, and that the school sites may need to be used for this purpose. I met with Mr. Kerrigan, Chief Georgie, and Commissioner Galoney on Friday the 6th to discuss the operational needs in detail. After that discussion, the sites that we will be using is the Richer School, the Kane School, the Wickham School, and the Hildreth School. And Chief Georgie has let me know that there will be a police presence at all four schools during the primary elections. Third topic is the proposed schedule of redistricting. So, I put out a proposed schedule here, that I would like to be able to retain the ability to say is still in a draft format, but it's getting very much closer to a real format. So in September 2019, the first step is to determine the building capacity of each elementary school, the number of positions that will be available. On top of that, not only the number of positions, but we also have to let all of the members know what certifications are needed for the positions, and how many positions are gonna be in each building. In October 2019, we're gonna send out preference sheets to affected MEA members with a two-week return date. In November of 2019, we anticipate giving early assignments to MEA members. And additionally, in November, I'm looking to pull together a community group to review the redistricting priorities and start work on the actual redistricting. I think that'll take between two and three months, with regular meetings, to be able to handle that type of process. By January of the new year, the group will decide on a redistricting plan, and then present the plan to the school committee. That's actually the policy we have in effect right now, is that administration will present to you a redistricting plan for you to then take and either accept or reject. I put in here February and March of 2020 to meet with each school's PTO and parents, so that way we can gain feedback on the proposed plan before it's accepted by school committee. So that way, we can get feedback from the whole community about the impacts, and maybe some things that we may not have thought out in the process. By late March of 2020, I would assume the school committee accepts the plan in its final format. In April of 2020, we would send assignments out to new families. And then for the remainder of the year, we would, that would allow us to have open houses at the new building, and all the other buildings. We would be able to have staff meetings, where the staff could meet their principal, or potentially their new principal, and we can begin to transition to our new elementary schools, which will also give us the entire year to really think about how best to communicate this to the children, and their change as well, and be reflective on how we can support everyone through this process, as we open up the new school. My fourth item is just want to recognize the work that the Wickham School and the high school did. Yesterday and today, the high school and the middle school planted purple flags on their site to demonstrate the number of lives lost to the ongoing opioid crisis in Massachusetts. This is a solemn reminder of the continued efforts to combat opioids in the Commonwealth, and an opportunity for students to participate in an exercise to understand the scale and the impact this has on every community. Special thanks to Kathy Leonard, and also to Mayor Vigent, for their continued advocacy and support for programming. Last year, we were very fortunate only to gain speakers, but we were able to update some of our curriculum at the middle school level as well. And today, I think, I was over at the middle school, it really went seamlessly, thanks to the staff, they did a wonderful job. All the kids were very respectful. And as we have parents come in for curriculum night this week, it's a reminder, not just at the Walker Building, but now a reminder at the schools as well, of this ongoing crisis that we're facing. And I think it's a reminder to the kids about the long-term impacts of their choices. I'd like to thank Principal Daniels. He put together a short video today for the kids, with some help from some of his staff, and with a very special message. So, the fifth item is just our partnership with Raytheon. I wanted to highlight this. So Marlboro High School students spent a week of their summer vacation learning about various departments at Raytheon's Engineering Exploratory. Students had the opportunity to learn about systems engineering, software engineering, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, and whole life engineering. Using LEGO Mindstorms EV3, students worked collaboratively on a robotics project and presented their final projects to Raytheon, Mass Hire, Metro, South and West, and MHS staff members. I also put some quotes from staff members and students for you to read about that impact. What did not make my report, but we did take action on, is that this morning, I had the principals at the preschool, elementary, and middle school send out notification that until further notice, that we will be having recess in physical education indoors until we have a couple weeks to review our status and the risk levels, and we can revisit it at that time. So I just wanted to give you, as I know I sent you the email as well, but I just wanted to publicly say it again. We just want people to be safe. Please wear long sleeves, where, you know, use bug spray, and follow all the recommendations from the mass.gov website.
There's a follow-up on that?
Yes.
We are starting on spraying, or we are not spraying anything, but the state is coming through the city again, hopefully tonight to get it over with, but they're doing the entire area again with the aerial spraying, so. Just stay inside. The state is saying there are no precautions needed, but, you know, I just ask people to use a little common sense. Good? Any questions?
I had one.
Yep.
I just, could someone shed light on whole life engineering, and what whole life engineering is? I try to find the definition. There's tons of jobs out there. No, huh? Okay.
Can I get back to you on that?
Sure.
Answer that question.
I know whole life life insurance. That's the only thing I know, but...
I do have, there's a job description. The Whole Life Engineering Center includes multiple disciplines whose main objective is to influence hardware and systems design earlier in their lifecycle to assure effective operation, reliability, maintainability, and economical ownership by the customer and end user. So it sounds like glorified quality control, or something. I don't know. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, thank you. The 2019-20 induction and mentoring program. On August 21st and 22nd, 34 new teachers participated in the Marlboro Public Schools' new staff orientation program. New staff received overviews on the evaluation process, EL services, special education services, human resources, and finance. They also met with building leaders, and as a group, we visited every school. All new staff will attend 12 seminars throughout the year designed to support both novice and experienced teachers as they begin their careers in Marlboro. Additionally, 20 of these new employees are first-year Massachusetts public school teachers, and will be supported by a mentor throughout the year. I also wanted to update you on a middle school math adoption. So a focus of the 2018-19 school year was to evaluate the middle school math curriculum. During that evaluation, it was determined that one grade six through eight core resource would need to be identified and implemented. Last February, Heather Kahn gathered a committee comprised of math teachers, special educators, EL teachers, and assorted district leaders to review potential resources. In addition to Horton Mifflin's Intermath, the committee also reviewed Go Math, Lustrative Mathematics, Reveal, Glencoe Math, Division 2.0, CMP 3, and Engage New York. HMH's Intermath met our needs and was selected for the following reasons. And as language objectives are embedded in every single lesson. There is a robust digital component that includes online assessment portals and online practice exercises. It includes an accelerated grade seven through eight math pathway. It is the strongest correlated math intervention program, Math 180, which we'll also implement at the middle school. It has small group differentiated activities built into every lessons with manipatives. It has growth mindset activities built into units, and provides opportunities for students to self-assess throughout the units. All teachers and special education educators received an Intermath bookshelf that includes teacher books, language strategies, assessment resources, and more. Every educator also received a differentiation kit and manipatives kit. Everyone will be participating in full day for Intermath PD on Intermath on Tuesday, September 17th. All educators using Math 180 program will receive PD on September 10th and October 1st. And furthermore, school district leaders attended a special Getting Started webinar the other day on the 5th, to learn how we can support teachers in using the new resources. Finally, there will be choice mathematic content offering PD sessions offered during both of the district-wide full-day PD in November and January. So we have new resources and a full PD plan to align with those resources as well. Any questions?
Questions from the committee, Mr. Tennessee?
Thank you. Two questions. Can you just refresh my memory? What is our math curriculum that we're offering within the elementary schools?
Yeah.
I thought so. So...
It's Go Math. It's same company?
Right.
So, yes, yes.
And how do they, I mean, obviously, when you look at your list, Go Math for this middle school was one of the options for consideration. How does this other one kind of work together from a vertical alignment?
So Intermath is the newest HMH product, so it was, is an option that we can convert from Go Math into it at the elementary in the future, if we would like to. These days, you do not buy a curriculum forever.
Right.
You have it for five or seven years. One of the discussions we had at the elementary level was, Go Math is giving us some really good data lately. For the first time last year, we achieved above state average in mathematics in fourth grade, so we were not prepared to make a change when we're doing something well. But the Go Math was in place at the middle school, and it wasn't quite meeting their needs. So the Intermath with the language objectives seem to have a few tools that we will be aligned, but we're hoping that it is actually a structure and additional tools that will support those middle school. As we know, seventh grade math, we're looking for something different.
Yeah. Okay. And thank you, because I thought it was Go Math. And then, obviously, with the language objectives, it really ties into one of the goals
Absolutely.
that we have. And then, I guess my other question then really would be more about the assessment tools, because... tools, because there'd been such a focus at the middle school utilizing FastBridge, and the main focus initially, if I remember correctly from Principal Daniels, was to focus in on math.
Yep.
So has that data been able to help support where your choices and your focus needed to be?
It has, but as you know, we've been talking about FastBridge for a couple of years because of the growth piece, so we are transitioning to NWEA, which also gives us the math data, but also gives us projections for not only MCAS proficiency at the lower grades, for third grade, gives us growths to work in our, starting with our kindergarten students, so that we can use it with our new model in K and 1. And also, it gives us projected SATs and AP scores at the high school.
NWEA.
Yeah, math growth. It is, yes, it's...
NWEA also goes through grade 10.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is important. FastBridge did not have that.
Did not have that.
No, it didn't have that element, and I guess that's what I was, again, wondering from a vertical standpoint.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say also thank you to the staff and Heather Kahn, who really worked really hard on that to come up with that recommendation.
Thank you very much. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of the committee tonight is another vote regarding our new building's compliance with the Northeast Collaborative for High Performing Schools. Our compliance here will allow the city to claim an additional 2% reimbursement for the total cost of the project. Our compliance with the Northeast CHIPS is being overseen by our architects, Mount Vernon Group, so we're doing this with their assistance. So the recommendation tonight is that the school committee commits to comply with all CHIPS requirements and best practices with the support of Mount Vernon Group, of course.
Ms. Matthews.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 2% more. Ballet Book Buyback Program. Jarick Elementary School, Kane Elementary School, $306.35 for Jarick, $59.79 for Kane.
Motion to accept.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carries. Members' forum. Any members, Mr. Senesi?
Thank you. I just wanted to give you all a little bit of a heads up. I did have an active day for MIAA Association only because of my role for MAS-C, sitting on the field hockey committee, as well as then on sports medicine. So relative to field hockey, which really will be for all sports come 2020 fall, Max Preps, which is a data collector, I guess I will say, a sports data collector, is going to start being associated, association on helping on seeding for different tournaments. And so I thought I would say something to you all and actually letting the community know, because you may want to start familiarizing yourself with it, if, you know, some people like that kind of data. But it is something that they're going to be utilizing, and it will start to come into play for 2020. It's not fully populated yet, so don't be distressed if for some reason you try and start looking at it and you don't see things there. It's just starting to get populated. The other thing is, I did think they're making some strides with some of the gender discussions and trying to make sure that some of the language is really mimicking the needs for social-emotional across the state, which I thought that was some good moves that are being done, and that's really being handled by the Blue Ribbon Committee. So, you know, again, if that's something that you have interest in, you may want to just take a look at some of the language changes, and they're trying to just make sure that it's much more inclusive to mimic what we're supposed to be doing in the schools. And third was about the sports medicine policy that had been issued. I believe it was initially issued by the MIAA Board back in January. Seems as though some of this didn't get communicated out quite as efficiently as it probably needed to, and ADs and superintendents are made aware of it, but I think there's going to be some tightening up on communication. The heat index policy is really just making sure that everybody has a really clear understanding of what could be unsafe situations for the students and their well-being. There's an instrument that they're asking for school districts to actually have. They have put out some specifics, but I think as some of us on the committee have asked them to make sure that they are giving much more information, and hopefully we'll be pulling together some ideas of guidelines or procedures as opposed to just a policy which really doesn't have a lot to help them on understanding what to do. But I thought I'd make you aware, because I personally think it would be a good idea for us to take up something, so we had a local policy that we could really establish if we had certain guidelines and work with the athletic director here with Jeff Rzansky to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I'd like to request that be taken up with a policy subcommittee, and wanted to make sure that you all were okay with doing something like that. So, those are my things.
Can I just ask a question? Where, if people wanted to get more information, where would they find?
Actually, on the MIAA website, there's a lot of different pulldown menus, so under sports medicine, they could actually go to that to actually see about this heat index policy. And as Ms. Matthews made me aware, that today in Metro West paper, there was actually something about that central mass. Athletic directors had had a meeting, I believe it was last week. There are some concerns, and I will say, as I voiced on the conference call that I was on earlier today about this, I don't feel like MIA necessarily really did a great job on communications, and as I think they are going to be reissuing some more information. Knowing that we're going into a season that's, right now, probably going to lessen in regards to heat, my suggestion and hope was that we go ahead and make sure that we get the right information pulled together so that we are ready for spring season, as opposed to pushing it off further, because it's an important subject. So put the heat on us, if you will, on sport, on the sports medicine committee and on MIAA, not just tabling it and not worrying about it. So that's my hope. I'm not, I'm just one member, but I thought it would be good to make you aware.
Any other reports of committees?
I thought we were members' forum.
I went backwards.
Oh.
Any reports of committees? Any other members want to be heard? Any other members want to be heard?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.